Good evening, everyone, and welcome. My name is Dave Colby. I'm president of the Columbia County Chamber of Commerce and I'll be your moderator for this evening's Chatham Board of Education Forum. There are six candidates vying for three seats on the Board of Education. I'd like to review the procedures that will follow for tonight's program. The candidates have been randomly seated here on the stage. I will begin the forum by asking two introductory questions to each candidate. First question will start at the end of the table, candidate number one through six. The second question will start at the end, coming back this way. We will rotate questions, so the second person seated will start the next question, and we'll go down the row. So everyone will have an opportunity to be first, an opportunity to be last. There are index cards that have been given to you on your way in, as well as pencils. And we have some folks here, if you raise your hand, people will be collecting. We have some volunteers who will be going around and collecting those cards. They will bring them up to me, and the questions will be randomly asked of our panel. Each candidate will have 90 seconds to answer each question. We have timekeepers here in the front, who will be keeping track of time. When there's 10 seconds left, they will be holding up the 10-second card for you. We will keep this forum to 90 minutes, conclude by 8:30. At the end of time, there may be an opportunity for each candidate to give a brief summary closing comment. Thank you for coming to tonight's forum, to be more informed about who you will vote for for this Chatham School Board. The vote will take place on Tuesday, May 19th, in the elementary school gym from 9:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. So let's begin. First question, starting with Ms. Hoover here on this end, is, "Tell us about yourself."
Well, I was not originally from Chatham, though the 90% of the people say that. While most people think I was born and raised here, I really wasn't. I came here after college. I planned on coming just for a year or two, but then I met my husband, and I ended up marrying him, and we settled here. And I taught in the district for 35 years. I feel that's one of my strongest contributions that I could offer to the Board, is my educational background in teaching. While here, we raised three sons, who were very highly active in the school district. They were on sports teams, officers, et cetera, et cetera. Upon retirement in June of 2009, I had my real estate license on the law for 35 years. I decided to get my license again and go into it, because my loan disis a real estate lawyer. And that kind of gives me a good idea of what your senior homeowner is looking for, as well as your senior citizen. And I know that it's very, very important in today's world to stay, you know, to have a budget that fits the people's needs, but also meets the educational needs. And knowing what the major transitions that are going on in education right now, this is a really important thing to be conscious of.
Good evening. My name's Dave O'Connor. I'd like to thank the Chatham Teachers Association for sponsoring this. I'd like to thank Mr. Colby for volunteering to act as our moderator. I'd like to thank all of you for giving up some time this evening to hear from us. I was born in Hudson, lived in the village of Chatham all my life, graduated from Chatham High School in '77. I was a student, non-voting board member on the school board with Mrs. Paxton and Dr. Gijabani and a bunch of others. I always admired people that gave their time in serving on a school board. I went to Union College, graduated in '81, went to Officers Candidate School for the Navy, was commissioned in 1982, and retired after 20 years and nine months. Leslie and the Boys '9, who backed upstate New York from Virginia. I've worked for Edward Jones as a financial advisor for the last 12 years. In December of 2013, I relocated my practice from Saratoga Springs to Chatham, so I now both live and work in the village of Chatham. I served a five-year term of the school board before, was re-elected to a three-year term, and now have been recently reappointed, and I look forward to serving again.
Good evening, everyone. I am Denise Barry. I would like also to thank Mr. Colby and the Teachers Association and each of you for joining us tonight. I graduated from, I was born in New York City and raised up here on my father's dairy farm in East Chatham. I graduated from Chatham High School in 1964. And when I took college and graduate school, I had full tuition scholarship to graduate school. And I've always joked that if it had said metallurgy, I would have been panning for gold somewhere. But what it said was special education. So I had been a special education teacher for 45 years. I came to the Hudson City School District in 1971 and retired in 2011, but I had been a full-time special ed teacher in the Albany City School District before I went to Hudson. Since retiring, I have been substituting, usually five days a week, as it was today, and was yesterday, and will be tomorrow. During the summers for 30 years, I had a separate summer career, as I call it, working for the Division for Youth, the Office of Children and Family Services, or the New York State Department of Corrections, either as an administrator or as a teacher in different prisons. And I'm trying to line up that job also for this summer to keep the tradition going. Much of my time right now is with the St. James Outreach Program, what free time I have, and we do a lot for the community in that respect. So I thank you for your time.
Hello, my name is Sebastian Trinans, and thank you all for being here. My family and I have been living in the Chatham School District for the last five years, and my children both attend any D elementary school. I run my own contracting company. I specialize in fine carpet weave. I also make sculpture, which I sell across the United States. I've taught sculpture to both adults and children. And in Chicago, I worked with children in underserved neighborhoods to grow and use vegetables in their schools. I went to the elementary school in a one-room schoolhouse on a small island in Washington State. It was a public school with a student body of 10 in a much larger district. My father ran for a one-seat on the school board in order to assure that our small school would receive the funding the larger district was keeping from us, by the way, which they were using to build themselves a new sports facility. He won, and he was able to get us school books and computers, and actually, it all worked out very nicely. And it taught me the need to get involved and to stand up for what you believe in, even if it's in opposition to those who claim to act for the best interest. I believe it is the job of school board members to be diligently working for all the people in our district, and to question the dictates that are handed down by the state and the administration, and to bring the information to the people so we can honestly debate the issues as a community. I graduated from the Evergreen State College in Olympia, Washington. And though I'm not originally from Columbia County, I was raised with the same values that make this community great.
That is time, you can continue when you're ready to turn back.
Okay, fine.
Hi. Hi, my name's Wayne Coe. Some of you know me from my recent articles. I got involved, more involved, in the Chatham School District when I heard that they were going to close the middle school. I don't like to be pejorative. I like to be positive. I'm a designer. A little bit about my background, I'm from Los Angeles, California, so I've been involved in the film industry most of my life. I'm an excellent draftsperson, a good filmmaker. I've made my living independently my entire life off art. I'm very interested in seeing improvement in the number of art teachers at Chatham. I'm highly supportive of the orchestra and the music programs, because I believe that's what the children need. And there are careers in all of those things, maybe not here in Chatham, but throughout the world. I wrote the article Superintendent's Steamroll's Design Disaster, advocating for considering the middle school, and making cost comparison, because that would remove children from the valley, put them in safer building, you wouldn't need parking projects, vastly reduce the bond. And also a safety article about the trains, which was highly researched. All of this you can find on chatham-n-y-watchedogs.com. My interests are making the Board a more accessible place for all citizens. I think that education should be of, by, and for the people.
That is time, thank you.
Thank you.
Testing, one, two, three. Hi, my name's Steve Gilger. I think you've read my bio in the little Chatham connections here. That's one thing I'd like to change right away, is this Chatham connections. I'd like this written by the students and the teachers, not by the Bosse's district. I want the people of the community to be a big part of their child's education. And to me, it's, this is part of the keeping the people, the community, and the children kind of at a very long arms' distance from the facilities, from the education going on here. I have a 13-year-old going to the middle school, and I want the best for him, as I do for everyone's kids here. Been a part of the community since 1996. I bought a wreck of a house, fixed it up, 20 years later, it's kind of a wreck again. But I'm a fixer-upper kind of guy. I taught, I have 10 seconds, taught theater to high school students out in New Jersey and various other things. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next question, a related question, coming back this way, starting with you, Mr. Gilger. What makes you uniquely qualified to be on the Board of Education?
Well, been involved now for a couple of years, going to all the meetings, looking at all the information that is out there. And I feel a lot like we need some change, positive change. My degree and education and work has been in building management, so I'm very good with buildings. Managed theaters in New York City when I was younger, and also managed churches and their facilities, very big, old facilities in the city. So I look at the middle school over there, and I see a sturdy old facility that I'd like to see remain in the hands of the community that owns it, not giving away to developers or real estate opportunists. I'd like to see it remain part of Chatham, because I think there will be growth in this area, and I don't think we're going to worry about declining enrollment as much as they're putting out there. Thank you.
All right. Some of us are taller, or challenged, it's hard to bend down. What makes me unique? Well, I'm an artist. I've made my living all my life creating visions for companies around the world. And one thing that I see a lack of on the Board of Education is vision. I mean, where are they going to take the school system? And what about local education? What about talking to the public on a very open and transparent method about what they feel their kids, you know, should be learning? Whether it's car mechanics, agriculture, or, you know, in my case, an emphasis on the arts? I think that, from my standpoint, I've gone to board meetings for two years, so I speak with some experience, that the public does not feel welcomed, does not feel safe, does not feel embraced, does not feel listened to in the board meetings. And I have lots of excellent and simple recommendations for solving that. More open comment, periods. Do not interrupt and let people say what they need to say. I can't imagine anything coming out of anyone's mouth here that would make me stop them. Yet the Board stops the public from talking almost every meeting. It's critical that we respect, because throughout the handbook, it says, "Respect is what you're supposed to offer the public." And I think that the students really have to come first. And when they speak as eloquently as they did, and what about the kids and the Chatham press?
That is time, thank you.
The Board should respond. Thanks.
I believe I am uniquely qualified to serve on the Chatham Board of Education because of the perspectives my life experiences have given me. As owner and operator of a contracting company, I've had to develop the skills to work with others on complex and fiscally-driven projects, and to arrive at sometimes difficult but consensus-generated decisions. My experience as a designer and sculptor has taught me to think creatively about problems that I'm presented with, and my experience as a teacher gives me insight into the classroom and the needs of students and the work of teachers. I was raised, to be fair and honest in my dealings, and I would bring these values to the Board of Education. I recognize there are members of the current Board who are working hard for the best interest of the student body and the community, and are striving for more outreach to the community and transparency in the district's financial dealings, and I would look forward to joining forces with them to continue to push for positive change. Thank you.
Thank you.
I feel that I am qualified to serve on the Chatham School Board, because for 63 years, I have been, for 63 years, am I coming across? Thank you. I have been associated with education in some way or another, either as a student or a teacher, or as an administrator. My career I regard as being a little bit unusual, in that most people have not taught at the elementary level, the middle school level, the junior high school level, the high school level, held adult education. Even in substituting, it's K-12, regular or special ed that I do. Many people prefer whatever it was that they were, if they were a secondary teacher, they'd do that and whatnot. But I like everything and anything. I love life. I have a doctoral degree in education from the State University of New York at Albany, which is the oldest teacher preparation institution in the United States of America. When I, the governor of New York State was the first person to address me as doctor. But that isn't the greatest honor. The greatest honor that I received, I think, was from a student. On my last year of teaching, as I was walking up Warren Street, I encountered a student that I had had in my first year of teaching. And after we exchanged pleasantries, I said to him, "Eddie, what do you remember about me?" And he said, "Good teacher." I'll always remember that, and I thank him.
Thank you.
I think what makes me uniquely qualified of these candidates is I've served on the Chatham Board for approximately seven years, so I have a record. It's probably correct that not all of you agree with all of my votes, but there is a record. And I hope what my record would indicate, so I'll do a little self-assessment, accurate or not, whatever. I've served on the finance and audit committees for a number of years, so I've been intimately involved in the budget process. And I think the district, not just me, but the district team, has delivered sustainable, good, solid budgets for the community, staying under the tax caps. I was involved in negotiations. I hope that the bargaining units realize that I'm a fair person and care about us having good pay and benefits for all of our employees, but still making it an affordable place to live. I think you'll see, I think you would think that I'm willing to push back against the superintendent and some school policy issues, to at least have an open discussion about things. I don't always end up with the majority vote, but I do speak my mind, and I hope you think I'm a good listener. I'll have my point of view, but I do listen to what everyone has to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
I think I'm highly qualified because of my educational background and my ability to be fair. You know, I think that any of you who know me over the years, I always had an open-door policy in my classroom, and respect for parents. I'd be there many, many hours after hours, preparing for the next day, returning phone calls. All parents had my telephone number, they had my cellphone number, they had my email. And I did many evenings at home, and my husband would just shake his head and laugh and go, "Are you ever gonna stop? Are you ever gonna stay home?" No, because I've always served in this community. Besides being in the school district and on many committees within the school district, I also have been since retirement on our community cares, which serves the needs of people who need. And I've also been an active member since day one of Shaun's Run, and all that it has done to teach young children about the hazards of drinking and driving, and the needs for seatbelt use. I also understand the many needs and things that are changing in the educational field. I don't have a problem. I actually support the Common Core. I think it's wonderful to raise the standards for our children and make them highly educated. But I think we need to make sure that our testing gives these kids time to learn these things before they're tested on it, not start in kindergarten and third grade and then test them in third grade.
That is time, thank you. All right, we will now move on to the questions from the audience. I promise to get through as many of these questions as possible. I do have a whole bunch of questions here. I also am going to try to leave 90 seconds at the end for each candidate to give some closing comments. So we will be moving down the row, keep track of the next candidate. We will move in direction down the row away from me. So, Mr. O'Connor, you will start the second question. The first question from the audience. How do you feel a Board of Education should support teachers?
Well, a Board of Education is required to work through the superintendent. So number one, we have to receive information from the superintendent. I think at Chatham, we have a program that stresses professional development. We invest significantly in that. And we've had a number of presentations by faculty regarding curriculum they're teaching and their opinions on where we should move with certain programs. And I think the Board has always been very interested in hearing that and supporting those efforts. The main one, though, is the pay and benefits. You know, this is a hard job, and if we want to have good quality people working with our kids, we need to honor and respect all the employees. I think having a competitive pay and benefits package is very important.
I feel that the Board of Education should certainly support teachers, and I feel that they should support any and all other members of the staff as appropriate. We, as a Board of Education, I should think, would work as a team with the other members of the school community, the superintendent, and the, and other members of the school community, in order to achieve goals. Goal attainment is so important. Really, I feel that that's, that it's really highly important to be supportive to the school community in general, as well as the teachers specifically.
So I believe that the way that the Board of Education should be supporting teachers is by talking to the teachers, seeing what's going on in the classroom, seeing how we can work with them regarding the curriculum, regarding facilities, see what they need for, say, the art teachers. Are they, do they have enough supplies? What can we do to supplement that program by talking, by outreach to other people in the community who might have something to offer and bring to that classroom to actually supplement the art teachers' curriculum? I also believe that the Board of Education should be supporting the teachers' entitlements and salaries and everything else that comes with being a teacher. I think that it is an incredibly important job in our community, having two children at the school right now, and planning to have them there for a very long time. I respect and admire, and will do everything I can to support the teachers who are working with their children. Thank you.
I agree that the Board needs to be much more involved in talking directly to the teachers. I've talked to a teacher today, who said that it was very different on the school board years ago, that is, the access of the public, as well as the teachers and employees to the board members. I would prefer to move back towards that kind of transparency, direct access and discussion. Recently, a policy was passed where the public can't talk about teachers at board meetings. So I found myself, and we're not at a board meeting, so I'll say it, I found myself complimenting highly the great work of Mr. Khan, Mr. Vee, and Mr. Dwyer, while he was cut off. I think that this policy is wrong, and I would look to see it changed. I think that we have to be allowed to speak about the successes and the achievements of our staff and our students. I also think that students have an important role to play with regard to teachers. I haven't talked with a student that's proud of the lighting system in Chatham. Why is it we can't, at this modern day and age, replace these flickering fluorescent lights from 40 years ago with LED bulbs? They fit in the same fixtures, they would save electricity. We need to be thinking of our students and teachers first, and that takes, as he said, direct contact with them, and not working just with the superintendent.
It's been such a long time. Would you repeat the question?
I will repeat the question. How do you feel a Board of Education should support teachers?
Okay. First of all, it's listening to the teachers. Really, have the teachers come in and talk to you guys. Talk to the Board, you know? Tell them what their worries are, what their fears are, what's working, what's not working. And let the Board and work stuff out with them. Let's get a dialogue going, more of a dialogue. The Board has got to be, have fairness to the unions, and to the teachers, and to the janitors, and to the bus drivers. There's got to be a fairness. I don't know if anybody told you, but I'm in the Rotary International Club in Chatham for the last 10, 20 years. And one of the things is that... Will it build goodwill and better friendships? So anything that the Board does, is it going to build goodwill and better friendships with everybody? The teachers, the administrators, the janitors. Part of our other stuff is, is it good-for-all concern? Is it good-for-all concern? And that goes to fairness for everyone involved with education. And the, one of the other ones is... Is it, is... Well, I can't read my own handwriting here, so I'll just move on with that.
That is time, thank you.
Okay.
All right. I think it's very important that the school board and the staff, be it teachers, TAs, janitors, whatever, have an open line of communication. I think we need to really listen to our teachers and the pressures they are feeling under the new Common Core, and help them to have the time to develop what they need to develop, to get these kids ready for these new standards. I also think it's important, perhaps, that any of the school board members spend some time in the school and observe what's going on, and what the kids, the pressures that the kids are under, and that the staff is under, and then be able to communicate back as a Board cooperatively, and let us all, you know, let the staff, the needs be heard and discussed in an open manner. I don't think, you know, obviously, there should be fairness between staff, and there should be fairness in treatment to anybody in the world. And if we have to say that if we want to be fair to the kid, well, everybody should be treated fairly. That's human nature, and that's the way the world should be. You know, a good school board and a good school system would work with respect for everybody, whether they're teachers, staff, kids, parents. And I think there should be an open door policy, where people are allowed to come in and discuss these needs with the staff.
Okay, our next question, starting with Mrs. Barry. What do you feel is the most important issue facing Chatham schools? What do you feel is the most important issue facing Chatham's schools?
Well, I know that one of the issues that's considered a matter of grave concern is Common Core. The declining population is another issue that I understand will affect matters here as we work together as a team on the board, I hope, to address. But basically, I feel that the basic issue is to continue to provide the extraordinary and wonderful education that Chatham Central School graduates have. Chatham has always been known for that since, for as long as I can remember. And I hear from my colleagues, people in other communities in the county, they seem to have a high regard for Chatham as I always have had. So I think the concern should be to move into the future, especially with regard to technology. And I see that in the newsletter, that is mentioned, that there's going to be a broadening of the website instruction, a broadening of distance learning. To me, these are all necessities that will take our young people into the future. Thank you.
So our most important issue facing Chatham's schools. I would agree that Common Core is very important. I think we need to try to get this right. I do agree also that I think it's a positive, but I think the rollout has been orderly handled. And I think we need to figure out how not to stress our kids out over this and to actually be able to see positive results from it. And I think that's going to be challenging. The other most important issue that I see coming up is going to be how to handle the shrinking enrollment with the school, if it is shrinking. And if consolidation is the necessary next step, how are we going to attain that? And I think this is an issue that we need to get the entire community involved in. We need to have a full vetting of the details of all financials on this. And it's very important that we come together as a community and try to figure this out and do it in a way which makes sense for all of us. I'm a taxpayer in this community and as well as a parent and it's very important to me on a number of different levels. Thank you.
Hi. Well, fellow taxpayers and fellow parents. To me, the number one problem is the superintendent. The superintendent drives Common Core. The superintendent drives consolidation. The superintendent drives unnecessary computer tech spending. We could save, I believe, hundreds of thousands of dollars by being a more well-researched, better-read Board of Education, an education that listens to the public, brings in information, because the local citizens know so much more than any one of us individually. Literally, that's the problem. The meetings don't need to run three hours, they could run two hours if she didn't dominate them. If the Board of Education ran itself and wasn't subservient to the superintendent, which is what I've seen for two years, if they didn't vote yes without consideration, without bringing in their own research, we would have a much more efficient school. I believe it would improve education. I believe it would allow greater access for the teachers and also remove a high level of stress and fear that I feel within the community, parents and sometimes within the community of the school. I'm sure she has tremendous talents, I've seen them. But we need to get this under control where the Board of Education leads and not follows and does what's right for the whole community.
That is fine.
Best.
There's an awful lot of pressing issues that are very important to Chatham. Common Core, the opting out, there's a big problem with Common Core. The people, there's a lot of people who don't like it and I want to see that worked out. I've always had this question, why is a British company handling the testing? I don't get that except for it looks like it's all about money, folks. Common Core's all about money. Corporations creating software, selling computers. It's not so much about education as it is corporate profits. And I'd like to see us and the board start realizing this and focusing on the students and the community and the parents and let the community figure out how it wants to educate their children. I'm not so sure that letting corporations dominate what's happening in our schools is a great thing. I'd like to get the spending under control. As you know, the superintendent is a member of a group called NICUS, New York State Council of Superintendents. Well, that sounds nice, but what it is is a lobbying firm. I invite you to go to their website. It's a lobbying firm for corporations to get access and advocacy to sell product in your schools.
Thank you.
Okay, I definitely feel there are two major issues that need to be foremost. Can you not hear me? What? Ah, good, okay. The two issues at hand are the Common Core and also the shrinking enrollment. I think it is pretty much a fact, if you look and look at the numbers of the incoming kindergarten classes today. Yes, last year was up, but in general, the numbers are down in comparison to like when my children graduated, the last one in 2005, when the classes were running between 120 and 150. So yes, there is definitely. But I think part of the issue is the curriculum and keeping our gifted students here and not going to private schools. I think the school board and the superintendent understands that there was some discomfort and discontent with the vote that was done. But I also think that the forums that were just held definitely was listening to everybody's needs in the community. And I have to applaud both the school district and the school board for arranging those forums, because that's what brought me back here. I sat on it as a retired teacher and got excited again about the changes and that the fact that everybody was being listened to. And the Common Core, we may not like the way it rolled out, but it really wasn't up to Chatham how it was rolled out. The state rolled it out. And that's where we need to be dealing with this, is through the state levels.
So the number one issue for the district is, I agree, Common Core and APPR. And the way I think those are going to work out is a strong administrative team with great teachers and a supportive board. So that one doesn't worry me. I think we have the people to take care of that. From a board perspective, the number one problem, and it's not going to be driven by anyone in the classrooms, is the fiscal cliff we're running up on. We're going to run out of money unless we come up with ways to save or to raise revenues. So there's the issue that bothered me throughout my seven years on in board service and that's where my attention is going to be for the next three years when elected, is getting our fiscal house in order to make sure we can provide the best program to kids. The one curriculum item that I want to drive as a board member through our superintendent to the staff is better wellness pre-K through 12. We need to do a better job of exercise, diet, and emotional intelligence, well-being of our kids. That is a lifelong skill that we need to invest more in so that all of our students, all of our students, bottom to top, benefit from that. Thank you.
Okay, next question, starting with Mr. Trenas. If the Board of Ed, except for you, voted, for example, an annual budget, would you support the majority decision or would you campaign to have voters vote no?
Could you repeat that?
Sure, and I'm reading it as written. If the Board of Ed, except for you, voted for something, voted, for example, the annual budget, would you support the majority decision or would you campaign to have voters vote no?
Well, I think that depends on why I voted no or had to vote. It's a very open question. So depending on the issue and how important it was, or I thought it was, to the health fiscally of the school, I would campaign to overturn the vote of the budget if I believed that that point was strong enough to campaign. So I'm assuming that if I did not vote for the budget with everyone else on the Board of Education, that I had my reasons for doing that and I would campaign against that budget. There is obviously a statute of limitations with that, too. Work has to get done, budgets have to get passed. I would do what I had to do in order to get my point across. And if that point was still in the extreme minority, I imagine I would have to work with the rest of the Board of Education to pass the budget so that school could continue. Thank you.
Yeah, we have to imagine why I voted no on the budget. Or maybe it's an ethical question.
For example, the budget.
Yeah, for example, so I can pick a different example.
That's for example.
Well, let's say, let's say I'm Mr. Simmons and I vote against consolidation. Because I think it's a value school, because I have to represent my constituents, because I don't quite agree with the members. Mike Chetty's a smart guy and I know debate, I know numbers and I think you could turn it another way. And the target of declining enrollment, I really haven't seen that reached. And while it pains me to do it, I vote no. So then the next question is, when you're outside and you're a member of the public, on the school board, no, I wouldn't fight or cause distress for my fellow school board members. I respect them too much. But outside as a free citizen, would I campaign? I don't think I would feel required to silence myself as an American and a free citizen. I think that would be crazy to do that. But within the Board of Campaign, I would certainly support the decision to work with my board members. Thanks.
Does the parent of Chatham, the school district, does the taxpayer, does the community want a leader that follows his instincts? Or do they want puppets on the board that do what they're told to do by the state? Well... I like to be a leader. So if I disagree with the budget and the majority says, votes it yes, and I vote no, and there's no way I can turn it around, well, then, fine. There's nothing I can do. If I disagree with something, I will try, using debate, to forward that idea. Because we want leaders on the board. We don't want puppets that just have that rubber stamp, yes. Oh, you want to spend another $5,000 on 3D imaging? This came up at the budget meeting the other night. Yes, they voted yes. Do we need 3D imaging of our schools? No, there were two board members who did vote no and I thank those board members who voted no. Finally, we've got some opposition to some of these spending things run by corporations from NICUS.
That is fine.
Okay, as a board, as a board member, I would work cooperatively with the people who are sitting at the board meetings to come up with the budget. Would I change my opinion or not state my opinion? No, I would definitely always, I've always been an open speaker, never been afraid to state my opinion, whether it was liked or not liked. Would I go out and campaign against something because I didn't believe in it? No, I think if somebody were to ask me my opinion, I would state it and say, well, I don't really agree. But would I go out and throughout the community and campaign and try to kill it? No, I don't think that's my job. My job is to speak at the board meetings. I'm willing, if somebody asks me to discuss it and state my opinion, but I'm not going to go out and try to create havoc within the community. I'm not going to be a puppet, I'm going to state my opinion and if anybody asks me, I will continue it. But I will not go out and try to be a huge ravel roser in the community.
A resolution is presented and a motion and a second enabled debate. Then, board members like myself are supposed to air out in public the reason that we support the resolution or the reason we're opposed. And that's our opportunity to sway our fellow board members. And at the end of the day, it's either five to four, six to three, or whatever the number is. But if the resolution passes, the obligation of every board member is to respect the result and support the measure going forward. The budget's a little tricky. I voted against the budget because I thought the budget should be higher. Because when you don't get as much money as you can from the taxpayers, the state will never let you get it back. So it can create a bit of a bow wave of deficits. So that's why I was against it. So I voted against the budget, but the budget passed. Now it's going forward to the voters. Board members cannot actively campaign for a budget in public. We can't call you and tell you to vote yes, support this. Our job is to present to the public the budget that we think should be passed, but we cannot campaign for or against it. Thank you.
I feel that everyone who is on the Board of Education should function in good conscience, developing attitudes for or against certain issues, whether it's really the budget or anything else, and work in teamwork with the other board members to come to final decisions. If it happens that there is a holdout person who has a certain attitude that does not agree with the others, as perhaps this question is raising, if that cannot be resolved, then that's just a matter of getting along. Whatever is decided by the Board of Ed, I don't feel that people should go out to the community if they are on the Board of Education and voice objection to what is the final decision of the group or anything along that line. What I do think is important is to somehow or other work, in other words, do advanced work with each other, talking and developing so that maybe there could be a common decision that would be made. Thank you.
Next question, starting with you, Mr. Coe. Are you familiar with our music education program in our schools? Will you continue to support it as well as our sports programs?
Yes, I think they're both equally important. And one thing I would do to support the athletic program would be to try to break down this wall from using non-teacher coaches. I think it's, the goal is the best education, the goal is the best coach and the best educator. A teacher may be a good coach, but if there are professional coaches who are willing to work within the budgets provided and are willing to go through the certification process, we should be looking for the best. I think this idea of like, there's this club, this company, and if you're outside of it, you don't get perks, and if you're inside of it, then you get the perks, is really crazy. It's anti-good education. And so our goal always has to be excellence. And that's a restriction that I don't understand at all. And I would, you know, I'm only one member when I get on the Board of Education, as Dave says. I'm only one member. But I would definitely campaign for, again, openness and transparency and use the best. You know, I've already stated that I support and love the music program. I think Mr. Izzy's a wonderful new addition. In fact, both of the new music teachers appear to be excellent. So I'm thankful on the good work that's been done on the board in that area. If we're, there are music rooms, new music rooms available if we were creative with the space we have. Thanks.
Absolutely. Absolutely. Last night, my son plays the trumpet in the middle school band. He loves it. He loves it, the kids love it. I think the one thing to keep them interested in education is to have them enjoy their life at school. If they don't enjoy going to school, if they've got to be forced into taking all these crazy tests with crazy questions, they're not going to enjoy going to school. If they don't enjoy going to school, they're not going to learn. That's the way I was. If you're not having fun, you don't want to do it. So art is a pleasure, it was a pleasure for me, I loved it. Music, did every bit I could, I was in the chorus, did the musicals. I loved it, it was fabulous. So, very important. Athletics, the kids all love the athletics. So to me, that's a very important part of the school environment. So as board members, we really need to support that and find ways to support it. I would rather have art teachers, music teachers, and athletic coaches instead of having administrators. I'd like to see more teachers teaching and students enjoying themselves in music art and athletics. Absolutely.
Okay, um, I absolutely would definitely support both of the programs. Um, my kids, I mean, everybody will know, my kids were jocks. Yes, they went through here and they played practice at every sport that there was. But they also were in the musicals, they also played the cello or the viola, they also played drums, they were in the band. And I think we need to have activities here the kids are excited about to come to school, besides just the academics. Some kids are into the arts and some kids are into their sports. And we need to equally support the two programs, and I feel both of them should be supported in an equal manner within the district.
I'm very proud of the support I've given the whole extracurricular program in Chatham. Our sports are great, our Shakespeare's grade, our arts and music programs, and all the clubs that are run. Kids get so much out of it. Um, I'm constantly, I have constantly asked what else we can do from an extracurricular standpoint to help expand how much our kids enjoy and find happiness at school. Thank you.
I think that the extracurricular activities are as important as the instructional activities. Uh, that they are enriching and that the students find them fulfilling. And I think they are essential to the program, and I know that we will go into the future somehow or other seeing to it that they are maintained.
Yes, absolutely. My children, I have two children, they're young. So they haven't quite started getting into music and not too serious about the sports yet. But one of the things that I heard when we first moved up here was, "What a great music program Chatham School District has." And also, "What a great acting program," which I'm sure my daughter is going to take full advantage of the Shakespeare program here. And the sports, my son's already in Little League and he loves it, and camaraderie that comes with that, it's fantastic. And I mentioned before, I came from a school where the student body was tent. We didn't have any of that. So to see my kids get to enjoy it in such a supportive and really enthusiastic atmosphere is something that's really special for me and something that I would absolutely continue to support. Thank you.
Next question, starting with Mr. Gilder. If we go forward consolidation, what changes do you feel need to be made in the next capital project?
First of all, I'd change the name from consolidation to closing the middle school, because that's what it is. The people of Chatham, and I've talked to a lot of them, do not want to close the middle school. So I'm getting rid of the consolidation, okay? I would find that, from the information that I have learned, not in the best interests of the community or the students or the teachers that work here. Look over at Ichabob Crane, they closed two buildings over there. Now, this one building was worth $10 million, they sold it to a art, a millionaire, billionaire art guy for $400,000, the price of a house. Now, this was taxpayers' money. So you had $10 million in your account, and now that $10 million is gone, you have $400,000. Okay? Now, their budget over there has increased, it hasn't gone down any. Check it out, look at the information. Closing these schools is not what you think it is. It looks more like New York State contractors, corporations out of Albany, pushing to close schools so they can get construction jobs to build new ones. And you'll notice that none of our local contractors here get any of the work. They'll make, they'll give you a million reasons why they can't do the work. But the bottom line is, they don't want the local guys doing the work. And I'd like to see some changes made in Albany with that.
All right, consolidation and buildings are really two different subjects. Um, I think that we need to continue to have a division for, of younger children, maybe middle school children, older children. But it can be done in different matters. When we shifted our fifth grade from the elementary school to the middle school, everybody was, "Oh my goodness, how is this going to work? Are the kids going to make it, are they going to survive?" They did just fine, and they did a wonderful job with housing the fifth graders in a section of the school where they were really shut off from the rest of the students, where they were, everybody was so worried about the interaction. Um, I think, you know, I, as, at the forums that we've been having, I sat with many middle school teachers and elementary teachers and high school teachers. It wasn't an idea that we had to have a separate building for each one of those divisions. It was they needed a separate section. And that is important, to remember what that middle school, those middle school years are. But they don't necessarily have to be in a completely different building. I don't know if we need to close a building or, or which building, I'm not going to say we'd have to. But I'm saying that we probably will be consolidating at some point in time. And at that point in time, I think we need to consider which of the best buildings to house the kids.
All right, so I voted in favor of consolidation. And the reason I voted in favor was the report that was put together by our outside expert team, presented fact after fact after fact on the reasons why consolidation would work. And when we questioned the administrators on what their concerns were, et cetera, the board was not told of overwhelming reasons to not consolidate. We were specifically told we could consolidate without any construction, without any capital project. And that's why we voted consolidation before addressing any building construction. Because if we needed building construction, we should have been going forward to the public on what building we needed first before we would vote on consolidation. So here's where I am. I think some of the messaging was controlled by district personnel. Uh, I think we have a fiscal cliff, I think we need to address that. Consolidation may be the answer or part of the answer. Um, but I'm willing to go back to a square one on, do we have a fiscal cliff or not? And what are we going to do to address that? If we have to revisit consolidation, then I think we will.
I think that the issue of consolidation and use of designation of space and how it is to be used, that would be a very specific, that would be not a general topic for general conversation. That would be a very specific sort of endeavor in which we would have to take into consideration specific needs of that time, population of the students being one of them. Um, I can see that the community can be, can be served in a number of ways, dependent on the issues at the moment. So I would say that that is something, like other issues that may arise, that we would have to take, we would have to take very careful consideration of at the time to make sure we're best using resources, buildings, talking about the number of students here, there, when, who's the staff, how to do it, and so on. Thank you.
So I think with consolidation, as we move forward and towards consolidation, we need to reopen the debate about what is the best way to house our school population. Do we move them to the upper school from the MED school? Do we bring them down here? I think the original debate was steamrolled to a certain extent. And in that, a lot of the economic repercussions were lost. And I think the public, as a community here, we all need to be a part of this discussion. Because it affects all of us here, as taxpayers, as parents, and it's, and as teachers. It's very important that we get this right, it's a huge change to the school. And I think it needs to be opened up and transparency needs to be brought to the crux.
Um, I posted to YouTube this afternoon Mr. O'Connor's comments to the board in June of last year. If anyone's considering that he's not interested in closing the middle school, I advise you to listen to them before you vote. My view on it is always the safety of the kids. There's one method of egos. And from my point of view, I've talked to the superintendent many times about this, she couldn't care less. And while the board has made many protestations, they haven't ever talked of this issue. The closing of the MED would have been vastly cheaper. It would have removed hundreds of kids from the valley, and no budget was done on it. The only criteria I can see driving the close of the middle school is the value to real estate opportunists and the value to the contractors who would do the build-out. If you close the MED, you solve all those problems. You reduce the safety problem, you reduce the traffic. I would immediately move the fifth and fourth grade up to the CMS, the safer building. There's all these complaints about the traffic that this board created, including Mr. O'Connor. It can be solved. It can be solved by moving the fifth and fourth grade back. There are ways to close no buildings. And Mr. O'Connor and the board know this. The community doesn't need to close any buildings to get rid of an administration who they joined the MED and the high school and the hall.
Next question, starting with Mrs. Holber.
Sir, sir, can I just ask you one thing? I think that what's going on now with individual names being mentioned, I think is highly inappropriate. And I'm finding myself sitting here feeling that that's just totally inappropriate. And I don't know what the job of a moderator is, but I don't think, in my opinion, it's appropriate. And I would share that.
I thank you, I thank you for your input. I would agree that it's probably not the good case, but the forum is an open forum. We're using the lead woman board's format, and the candidates are welcome to say what they believe.
I believe the safety of the children comes first.
That's enough. Next question, starting with Mrs. Holber. Universal pre-K has demonstrated large benefits for children. Will you support further and continued funding for CCSB's pre-K program?
I think probably everybody knows what I'm going to say, because I spent my years in kindergarten, first grade, and second grade. And I do truly believe that education of the younger children is of utmost importance to the learning process as the years go on. Um, I absolutely would continue to fund any pre-K programs and the funding that is necessary to make them work. Because I believe as the years have gone on, the expectations of young children have grown. Um, I watch my young grandchildren at the daycare in Malta, and it amazes me at the things that they are exposed to. And yet I know that there are other young children who are not being exposed to the same things. So I truly believe that, you know, a certain segment of young children need to be in school learning, because unfortunately, they're not always getting the skills. And I won't go into some of the things that happened in my classroom over the years, but there were, as the years went on, there were children who were just, you know, coming in less ready for school. And I think those needs can be met in pre-K so that they too will have the ability to have success when they need to learn to read and move on with their higher education. But without those skills, they'll be, they'll fall short on it. So yes, I definitely believe in supporting pre-K programs.
Universal pre-K and the pre-K in Chatham, I couldn't be happier with this, and I think it should be expanded. For people that wanted disparage, board members for not being leaders and not having courage, I was, I would say the founding person for pre-K in Chatham was Gail Dett. She routinely brought this topic up. Uh, I saw her put down several times at board meetings over it, but she stuck with it. And I just couldn't be happier that we have a growing program there. And Gail, I think a lot of it has to do with it. Thank you.
Absolutely, no questions asked. Fund it and teach those very old children as early as possible. Thank you.
I would agree. Everything that I write about universal pre-K, it does nothing but good for the kids. And I think it's great to give all the kids as much of a head start as they can get moving forward. It's going to be a challenging world, and especially with the increase in testing, every little bit can help. So yes, I absolutely support it.
Yeah, everything I've heard in the community and within the administration is it's a winner.
It's a pretty, pretty good idea, as long as the parents are okay with it, fine. You know, if they want to send their kids early, that's great. If they want to keep their kids at home, because they want their little kids to be little kids and not have to deal with school for another year, that's great. I like the idea that the parents can choose what they want to do with this. Parents and community should have the choice. Um, and I'd like to address this woman's comment down here. Conflict creates debate, and democracy in the United States is a debate of issues. Don't be afraid of conflict, everyone, it's not going to hurt. No one's going to hurt you. Conflict is a way to debate the issues. And if you're all afraid to debate the issues, we can't move forward. Okay? Thank you very much.
All right, next question, starting with Mr. O'Connor. What is your position on giving the veterans relief as authorized by New York State law?
Well, it would drop my taxes. Um, you know, I want to say this about veterans. I mean, I did 20 years and nine months in the Navy, and, um, I want to say that I was pretty well taken care of by the taxpayers of this country. And my family has been. And I want to say that there are a lot of vets that we don't do enough for. But is it every property owner in the Chatham Central School District who is a veteran? Or do they all need the break that we could give them? I say no. Because I don't want a greater tax burden to fall on my neighbors because I'm not paying my fair share. And it's no disrespect to the veterans, it really isn't. But I just want to say that it's a low-sharing item, and this is one where we served because our country needed us to serve, and we did it without expectation of anything special. And that's the way I believe we should be going forward. Thank you.
I think out of respect for the men and women who have served for us, this is an issue to which very careful consideration should be given. Uh, if there is some means of... If there is some means of determining the basis of need, I would not even consider it subject to question. Automatically, serve the veterans as they served us. If for any reason individuals among the veterans choose to decline it because perhaps they themselves or the families do not need it or cannot make use of it or what have you, I would say that that would be perhaps an option that could be introduced in some way. But the main point that I wish to make is that the respect has to be there for the veterans who are protecting you and I and have done so in our country.
I would agree with what I said. Completely. I honestly don't know that much about that issue in particular, but I would agree that if there was a way to determine whether the veterans were in need and be able to give that benefit to them, I would absolutely support that. Thank you.
I was educated by Mr. O'Connor's comments on the evening that he voted against it. I agree with him entirely that it's a, it benefits the biggest landowners more than it does the individual veterans. It isn't based on need. As a board member, if I were a board member, to me, my job, I have two eyes as a board member, one for kids and one for taxpayers. And it knows to ask myself, is any money being taken from the taxpayer on the way to the kids? And to me, I don't see the educational component in this veterans' tax exemption. I don't see what you're doing is you're having me as the board member start taxing my neighbors to, you know, help the vets. And that's not what the school board's job is. There's nothing in the school board handbook that says that. And so it's like getting beyond the ethic. It's, you know, philosophically, and this is only my view, we've been in war now 20 years according to what Mr. Chatty said, and this starts to look like a war to us. And to hide it, why not just come to the voters and say, would you guys support the veterans? And then we can individually, in good conscience, say yes, but as a school board, this is not our job. Our job is to deliver superior education for the children.
School taxes are for education. The veterans need, and I would help, go to the state, go to the feds to work that out. But school taxes, property taxes are for education in the community. Let's, we all know, if you've read in the paper, the corporations are not paying their fair taxes anymore to the government. They're sending it out to offshore counts. You've all read this. And I think what may be happening is they're trying to make up some of this money on the backs of taxes, tax, property taxes. So keep a close eye on that stuff. So school taxes and property taxes are for education, but I certainly help them at a state and federal level.
Okay, I kind of sit in the middle of this. I agree with Mr. O'Connor that for those people who can afford to pay the full amount of taxes, they should be. And I don't know if there's an ability to have a sliding scale on this, that veterans who are making less than such-and-such in income be allowed some sort of a tax deduction to benefit for all they've done for us. But if, I also know that there are a lot of veterans who are making a very good salary, and I think that, you know, like Mr. O'Connor said, he feels he should be paying his fair share too. And I don't know, it's a complicated process. It is a one that I have as much education on as some of the other topics we're discussing. So I don't know if what I'm saying is a possibility, but I think that that's something that I would consider as a sliding scale for veterans.
And this will be our last question from the audience, and we'll want to put some comments from the candidates. Question for you, Mrs. Barry. What changes do you see in the future of the school district? The school district?
Well, there are, I mentioned in the newsletter, the spring edition of the newsletter at Chatham Central School, that certain changes are anticipated. They are considered proposed initiatives, I believe are the words, and I find them to be very, very impressive. The use of the websites, increasing the skills at the high school level of websites and other tech skills like that, I think is crucial to our students' performance in the world as time goes by. There is also mention of distance learning, I mentioned earlier, mentoring with the older children. A good friend of mine is pictured in here, her name is Judy Hollister, and I will take the liberty of my may to mention her name because she's doing such wonderful work with the mentoring. Anything that can expand that mentoring program, bring it to, bring the benefit of it to it to increase number of children, I think we all would be so in favor of that and encouraging the work of Judy and others in that area. So I think it's just basically following the plan that we had, as stated here, would be a wonderful step into the future.
Changes in the future, Mrs. Barry. I agree, technology is, it's gonna change education. It already has, and it will continue to. It's making its way into all the classrooms. It's making its way into the way that students communicate between each other and with their teachers. And I think it's, offers a lot of opportunity to diversify the education of the students and to give them a broader scope of how to see the world and their opportunities in it. I also believe that mentoring programs are really important and that bringing more people with real-life skills who, let's see. It's not good? Oh, yeah. It keeps turning on. I, I mean, we have so many creative and fascinating people in this community that we could bring into the schools to offer these new perspectives to the students so they could see where their lives could go and where they could take them. And I just, I think it's a very exciting time for education, and I look forward to seeing where it goes. Thank you.
I love this mic. Well, I think, I think there's so much opportunity for positive change. You know, the first thing we need to do is separate ourselves from corporate elements that, that aren't serving our students. You know, the paving over the MED playground was not a great architectural feat, and yet that company, that architect has collected $668,000 in the last five years from our school. Now, if you think of a teacher as, a new teacher's $60,000, that's a figure I'm picking out of the air. That's 10 teacher years wasted. Wasted. We could have had two teachers for the five years this superintendent has been here with this architect. A new art teacher, new science teacher, and we'd be at the same place. We voted down, the public voted down a $3 million parking project last September, and they've got a $2.4 million parking project they're brewing, and then there's the $700,000 access road. We need to take that money and make certain it's invested in education. And anytime there's any project that goes through the facilities committee, they need to be asking, is it mandated? Does it help the kids? Does it help the teachers? Otherwise, don't waste the money. So I think good accounting and a vision of community involvement and transparency within the Board of Education. We should be conduits of information to the public to help their understanding of what's going on. That's the best board I wanna serve. Thanks.
What changes do I see here at Chatham in the future? An opening up of the control and running of this school system back to the parents, back to the community, back to the taxpayers. I think Wayne has got so much imagination. Did you know that he came up with ideas to combine all three schools together? They, the state has all these rules about things, and I think they do that to protect corporations who wanna do building, build-outs on everything. But the imagination that's beginning to come into the school district because of conflict and debate is really important, and I think you're gonna see more of this, more open meetings, more open facility meetings. Did you know the public hasn't been allowed into facility meetings for like five years? And only two weeks ago, Wayne held the law up to the board and said, here's the law. There are three exceptions that keep the public out, and if you don't meet these exceptions, then you're against the New York State law. And they let us into the meeting. And in the meeting, we watched them spend $75,000 in about an hour. And guess what? A lot of it went to this one company, SEI, a corporation out of Albany that's politically connected and part of the Nikos lobbying firm. Folks, there's stuff going on around here that you need to start seeing. Thank you.
What changes do I see? I definitely see improvements, I'm hoping, might be through distance learning. We have a lot of our upper, older children who can afford to go to private schools leaving, and not, I mean, I understand those who are going away to boarding school, but there are a lot of others leaving because there aren't as many enrichment classes here as there might be in other, you know, in a smaller private school. I think distance learning will allow us to bring in a lot of new things. I heard some exciting things discussed at the forum meetings on how we could be bringing from another school district that's teaching a really exciting class here to Chatham through the distance learning over the internet. I think these are things that we should be exploring so that we can, you know, increase our academic rigor, the, in enrichment areas. I'm not just talking about our basic academics, but I think, you know, the arts, the sciences, some of these exciting things that we can offer to kids because it's offered someplace not far from here, and we could be opening it up to our students by bringing it in through distance learning. And I'm hoping to be able to see those sorts of things done in the near future.
So what's gonna change here at Chatham? The education fire hose is just gonna get turned up higher and higher and higher than it is now, and this is already like an unbelievable amount that our kids need to pick up compared to when I was a kid, certainly when my parents were students at Chatham. The blessing we have is we have administrators and teachers who are gonna do the bulk of the heavy lifting there to make sure our kids are prepared. So I wanna tell you what's changing that concerns the Board of Education and why you need to determine what three people are gonna sit and see. We are facing a fiscal cliff, and significant work needs to be done to prioritize what we're gonna do, what we're not gonna do, how are we gonna raise revenues, what are we gonna cut, how are we going to pay the bills. It's gonna change significantly from today where we can pay to where it's gonna get progressively harder and harder and harder. And we haven't had a stock market crash since 2009. Market's been up, okay? But interest rates are incredibly low, and we're due for some sort of a correction, and that's gonna have an immediate impact on the pension plan. Here's the other thing. If nine sitting board members, the only members who are guaranteed to be sitting there come the next year who have at least two full years of experience are Melanie Spahn, Craig Simmons, and Muriel Faxon, this is not a time to have too many new ideas and work on the board.
I'm gonna close out session by giving each candidate 90 seconds for a closing statement, and we will start review, keeping the same rotation going, Mr. Treaney.
So I'd like to thank you all for coming. I'd like to thank you for considering my candidacy for the school board and giving us all the opportunity to speak to you and share our ideas of the future and maybe some of our critiques of where we're at right now. And I would look forward to the opportunity to serve on the board, to do my best to bring transparency and community involvement to the decision-making that the board and the administration are confronted with. There are some big issues on the table, and I really believe that we all need to be involved in helping to make those decisions. And that would be my main objective, is to try to get the community to be a part of that and to share in that journey. So, thank you very much.
Thank you so much for coming out. It's kinda warm. I hope we haven't taken too much of your time. I believe that I have lots of ideas as a designer that could contribute to the more efficient running of the school system. I greatly value the teachers and the administrators and what they've done with Chatham, but I do see structural problems within the Board of Education and lack of awareness of what's going on and the pressures of the Board of Education around it. The Boards of Education are listed as a $33 billion tech battlefield in the state of California. These tech companies pay NISCUS for access and advocacy to sell us computers and other things. Some of these are necessary, but I wanna see studies that prove these purchases make sense. There are plenty of studies that say children shouldn't get so much tech contact in screens before the age of 10 to 14, and I tend to empathize with those. Media is the number one problem of our time. If I could do something in the future, it would be teaching media class here so that we could harvest the children's iPhone images and the parents and put together media that sells our community, that sells the achievements of our children. And that would offer also genuine 21st century education in that media is used to influence and
That is time.
At all times, and if the kids work with it, they will better understand it and be protected from it. An educated electorate is essential. Thank you.
Final comments. If you've noticed, there's 38 people in the audience. 38 out of a community of 6,000, 10,000? It's kind of a problem. Wayne and I go to these meetings, we're the only parents and taxpayers there. The other 20 are school administrators. How many people in this room are not associated with the school? One, two, three.
Three. Mr. Walker, you are.
How can they not associate? You're next board president.
So there is a, there is a problem. People, the people aren't going to these meetings, and if you ask the farmers in my neighborhood, they go, it's a joke. They do whatever they wanna do, whether we complain about it or not. Okay, so we're trying to make a change. If you want the same old, same old, and continue going down the same path, fine, do that. But if you want some change, pick some candidates that are not part of the system, and you'll get some new ideas, people that aren't afraid. The fiscal cliff, the United States government is, how many trillion in debt? 18 trillion in debt, and they keep right on going? So if we go into debt, hey, we'll just keep right on going. Why not?
That's time. Thank you.
In closing, I'd like to thank all of you for coming out this evening and listening to our ideas. I'm hoping in the future to be part of the ongoing member, Chatham Central School Board, and to work cooperatively with the people on the school board to bring the best educational system we possibly can to our children. I always had an open door policy within my classroom, and I would also like, believe that I would continue to have an open door policy to any I would continue to have an open-door policy to anybody in the community. I'm more than willing to share my telephone number, my email address, whatever, and discuss issues. I'm not going to hide, as just a board member. I've always been somewhat outspoken on what I believe in and what I don't believe in. And I will continue to support the board, work cooperatively with the board, but also hope to be able to share some new insight on the school board.
Again, I'd like to thank the Chatham School Teachers Association for sponsoring this. Thank you, Mr. Colby, for moderating, and thank you for attending. I'll keep this short. I have to go home and watch a YouTube video. I have a record, I have a record on the school board that I'm proud of. And I'm not going to say I didn't make any mistakes, but I stand for good education, great, great public education for our kids, support of our staff, fiscal responsibility with taxpayers. And in these difficult times, having some experience carry over on the school board, I think is critically important. So, I hope I've done enough to earn your support. I don't mind there only being 38 here. I'm Irish. Voter, you vote often. You can make a difference. So, thank you very much.
I too would like to thank Mr. Colby and the Chatham Teachers Association and all of you for turning out tonight. At one point, I invited Reverend Van Wart, who many of you may remember, a minister here in town, to visit my religious ed class at the church. And he said to the kids, I love Miss Mary. She brings people together. And I assure you that I would work hard for you if that is what happens, which I sincerely hope it does. What we need are rational, reasonable, responsible people, such as we have with us here tonight. And I think everything will turn out okay. I'm grateful to know you and work with you. Thank you.
Thank you all, ladies. And I want to thank you all for coming, and that concludes our forum tonight.
Thank you and God bless.
I mean, you were like a given if we didn't even know you. But we decided, you two on them right there, but it's based on the changes. I went to Chatham to school the day before, and we vote no every single year in the budget, every year, because of what they call, we vote no on consolidation. We vote no on all the propositions. We vote no on every school board member, because it's the same over and over and over. So...
And you grew up here?
Oh, I graduated from here. I'm just in David's class. I grew up in Canaan, born and raised.
The farmers next to you.
That's frustrating. It's so frustrating. And it's a shame. I mean, you're in this community, this is your community, you're more invested here than...
And you know, they didn't have anything to do with this. You can tell, I mean, I wrote like on every page.
This is written by district votes and people.
What I was going to say is, every year, there has been a budget public hearing. We go. Nine times out of 10, you know, we said there was 38 people, and we said it's here. Okay. We are the only two. Eight years in a row in Canaan, who come out for the public hearing. The only two. And it's always the superintendent, and we get in a little match back and forth, and you know, she justifies everything. We sit there and question everything. But, and no one else comes out. We got a friend of ours to come, and he got so mad that he just won't come back, because he knows he's going to lose her. So, he's going to end up looking bad, at which he doesn't want to do. And so, then we got looking, sleeping, watching the paper, like, okay, so they know us two are going to be the only ones in Canaan, so this year didn't even hold for them. There has been no public hearing that we've gone to. And I know they missed the one the other night that took the matter of voting, anyway. And then they tried to justify, we have less kids, we get more money from the state, but they want more money. And they still think they're doing a good deal, because we're over the 2% cap, but now we're under. We're great, we're going to be under.
You know why they're doing it? Exactly. Look, we've reduced the cost.
And then they'll all come out, and they go, yes.
We call it the war.
They're going to come out and vote yes.
We call this school district, they have a war. They have a man. Schools, you create contractors, spending, political wrongies in Albany. We swear that they have a man to, I mean, the state is running these schools. It's not a local people. And this is why they say that people are losing demand for something in America, because the government is taking it. How about that line? S.R.A.'s, no tax, no cost play, then nobody's running. Who's going to...
Our resident deputy, so the school gets the office.
When terrorists come into our school and shoot at everybody, we will have, we'll run to the computers, and we'll look at the 3D image inside the school. So, we'll know that there's some chairs here, so that our SWAT team won't...
That was an actual sales pitch?
Well, he wasn't there. He came three times.
Who asked for it, right? Which is a friend of ours, so we will ask him. Finally, we will ask him. Because he went to him, and he did things, and said, the officer here. We went to him as friends.